Good afternoon. Good afternoon. There we go. Good afternoon and welcome to the La Plata County League of Women Voters School Board Candidate Forum for the Durango School District. We appreciate you guys being here on a Sunday, the only sunny day of the weekend. Very, very nice of y'all to come out. And um, we have four of our school board candidates here. The other two were unfortunately unable to make it. Um, schedules get busy, especially during campaign season. But if you're curious to learn more about them, we encourage you to, you know, you'll get a really good sense of these candidates. Try and learn well what the other candidates are doing also. One option is that there was a previous candidate forum run by the Democrats uh, that you can find on their Facebook page. I think it's just Durango Democrats is how I found it. Um, visible and that has Tamara Thengard also. She was at that event. So that would give you five of the six. And then I'm sure Pearl has a website. Um. We had questions that were submitted to us from the community, from parents, from students that we called through to get the questions we're asking tonight. But we also wanted to honor your questions. So there are index cards and pens available for you for to write down a question. And then just you can flag it in the air and Carrie, can you stand up? There's Carrie. She's the person you should hand the index card to. Anyone else? I'm going through you. Um. Again, time doesn't allow us to get to all of the questions. So we will try to avoid duplicating similar subjects um, like that. And we'll get to as many questions as we can. Uh, I think that's all I need to say. Thank you so much. I'll get turned over to Kathleen.
Thank you so much. My name is Kathleen Wells from the crowd, Durango town. Maybe in about 20 years I will be anyway. Uh, glad to be here and more importantly, I'm very happy to be here as a moderator for this forum. Uh, we have some important work to do in our school and these are some of the people that have raised their hand and said, we'll, we'll do it. Send me. And so really thankful for the four of you that were able to come and we've got the other two. Um, uh, we're sorry they're not here. Let's take a little bit of housekeeping advice here. Um, this session may not be recorded in any way. So if you've got your phones or whatever, if you can turn those off. And if you need to take a phone call, if you could take it outside, that would help our folks keep their heads straight on answering these, these good questions. Um, restrooms will run down this hall. Feel free if you need to get up during this. Dale, we won't have a break unless y'all raise your hands and say, give us a break. So um, we'll do that. Okay, we'll begin with the questions that have been submitted to us ahead of time. But we're still going to make sure we make, make time for you to have your question, your gear. And we want to make sure to get an answer to your question. Uh, the audience questions need to be on these cards. They will go to these lovely ladies here who are our question people. And they'll, they'll take the question and then give it to me if we're deciding what we need to do. Um, we have volunteers ready to pick up your questions. So raise your hand if there's a volunteer. Um, so uh, they can probably get up. And at the end of the time, if there's any remaining questions that have not been asked, like if you guys shower us with wonderful questions and we can't get to them by five o'clock or whatever. Um, we're going to make sure that all six of the candidates get those questions. We're going to send it to them afterwards because we think it's important that you know what somebody, one of your voters, one of your constituents really wants to know that. So you'll be getting a little mail, an envelope from us, little lovely questions, I'm sure. Um, this will be our format on timing. Each candidate will have one minute to do a very brief introductory uh, statement of why they're here, why they're running, whatever they want to say to introduce them to you. And we'll just go down the row here. And then after that, we'll start our questions. We'll start with some four basic questions and then we'll move to the audience questions. And each of you will have two minutes to respond to the same question, one after the other. And just so somebody doesn't get stuck on being first or last all the time, you're going to rotate as we go through. So hopefully I can keep track of all that. Um, then after we finish the questions at about five o'clock, uh, we will move quickly to the closing statements. And they will each have two minutes where you can summarize what you said. You can reemphasize that central point. You can respond to something, something, somebody just said that you can't respond to, whatever you want to do to close this out. And then we all go home for a nice evening. So hopefully this will be a time when, when if you have not already decided how you're going to vote, this will help narrow down some of those issues. Sorry, and for us. Please watch for the timekeepers paddles. It may be kind of tacky and sit right in front of you. It's a help to give you some idea of when you're running out of time to say.
You're not.
So introductory statements, let's start with Erica. She's number one.
Number one, great. Good evening. My name's Erica Brown and I am the parent of two Durango High School students. And my experience in those schools in the district really started when they started kindergarten. I started volunteering in their classrooms. I ended up joining the school accountability committee. I participated in Leadership 9R, which is a program that was happening at the time. Um, and since 2020, I've had the privilege of being the vice president of the Durango Board of Education. And it's been really exciting to see the progress that we've made over the last five years. The metrics um, of success are just all moving in the right direction. Whether it's student success or teacher satisfaction or parent confidence in the district. Um, things are really going in a great direction and I want to continue and build on that. Um, with transparency, genuine family engagement and making sure every student is succeeding.
Thank you. Andrea.
Um, my name is Andrea Parmenter and I am a parent and a community member. My kids are fourth generation Durango, both graduates of 9R schools. And my relationship with the district started in 2008 when my oldest started at Sneedham. And since that time, I have been volunteering without pause, volunteering in our schools thousands of hours. I have been the secretary of the Board of Education since 2019. And during that time, we have hired a world-class superintendent who built a portrait of a graduate career and roadmap skills that's helping center and ground all of our kids. We've got direction going momentum, momentum, momentum in the right direction with our test scores, our parent satisfaction, our staff, our teacher and our own student satisfaction. Um, the things that I'm most invested in are working on elevating the student voice, increasing our funding and striving for its educational equity, which means giving every student the resource that they need to be successful in our schools.
Rachel.
Hi there. I'm Rick Peterson. Um, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for putting this on. I think it's incredibly important that our community kind of gets to know our candidates and the school board is one of the most important aspects of our, our local government. Um, I've been, well, both of my kids came through Folia Mesa and Escalante. And my son is in DHS and my daughter is still finishing up Escalante. Um, I never really wanted to run for, for elected office, but had uh, had some very trusted friends and educators who came to me knowing my background in volunteering for kids and said, hey, we, we need somebody good to run in this district and we think you'd be okay. Um, I'll be honest, I'm very glad they did. I found this to be just an incredibly fulfilling position. I've served as treasurer on the board since 2021. And uh, I'm glad I get the opportunity to do it for another four years hopefully. Thanks.
And Jody.
Good afternoon. My name is Jody Tramp. And uh, my experience started when my daughter was in Head Start. I served on the Board of Directors at the point where I was president of the Board of Directors, vice president of the BTO and on the Personnel Committee. I've been a builder here in Durango since 97. I've seen us grow and I've seen us struggle. And it's always been my intention to move on up to, through the school district. And then uh, we also had a pandemic and I ended up homeschooling for three years. Well, now I'm back and I'm willing to serve. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, let's start with our first question. Andrea, I think it's you. You ready to start this?
Sure.
Okay. What do you see as the one or two major issues that are facing Durango School District in the near future? And how will you address those issues?
Um, funding, funding, funding and funding. Um, we are chronically underfunded. We are funded in the bottom, I want to say 10% of all states. We are funded on a per pupil basis. And so every October, they go into the schools, they count butts and seats on that day. And then you are backpack funding in a certain amount of money that goes for each student. And then there are title funds and bill levies and some additional funding, which were maxed out. Um, since 2007, eight, that big crash, we have been withheld, funding has been withheld. Um, it was promised from the state to districts across Colorado, billions of collective dollars now. And I don't think we're going to get that back. So we're trying to do more with less cabin through 15 years of rain or build crisis. We've been to cut $2 million from our budget after all of our departments have cut 10%. Our schools have cut five. So funding is the most critical thing. And what we need to do is to look at this and we are from a community perspective with a budget community. And we have a strategic plan to look at other sources, other ways that we can be smart to retain our personnel. And if there are cuts that have to be made to do that in a very wise way, that keeps the impacts as far away from the students as possible. It is a community problem. It's a collective problem. Public schools must serve everybody there or we have to keep them thriving. But funding is our absolutely most critical issue at this point in time. And I'm looking forward to partnering with our teacher giddings and um, our regional partners and the state and other school districts to get a louder voice towards the legislature and see what we can do to try and have more funding for our schools, our students.
Right. Rick?
She took my answer. And you're all serious. And so as the treasurer, um, when I first ran for school board, I, I had no knowledge of you know, what school funding was like in this state. Um, it's kind of a rude awakening when you start doing a little bit of a deep dive. And you find out for such a prosperous state, we, we really are very, very badly underserving our students because of the lack of adequate funding. Um, I'm sure we'll get into it a little bit later more, but there was an adequacy, adequacy study done by the state of Colorado um, to try and figure out what it would take to adequately fund schools with certain benchmarks. It's an independent study. Unfortunately, it's still since I believe in the governor's office, it hasn't been used yet. I think probably because the study states that, you know, we take about $4,000 per student more to adequately fund education. Um, just to give you an idea, our per pupil funding, which varies a little bit year to year, um, was about $11,000 per pupil. So you can imagine what an additional 40% or 35% of money on top of that would allow us to do. Um, it would give us much more money to be able to create better wages for our staff and our teachers. That's a real problem because we all know how difficult it is to just afford to live in this wonderful town we live in. Um, the bottom line would also be for our district in particular, if they were to follow that adequacy recommendation, it would mean $20 million more dollars in our budget. And that would be huge. But again, it's all wrapped up with table is a big part of it. Um, the antiquated fundings uh, system they have and, and the funding. I'm, I'm losing the word I'm trying to come up with, but it's the method they use to figure it out. So funding is our number one biggest problem right now.
Jody.
I have a degree on funding. As I'm finding out, we're very limited by the state as to what we're going to get. This has been a learning process for me. Uh, when I came into the race, I thought that it was more locally funded. And so, so I'm looking forward to that and committees to figure out what we can do. Um, now there's another uh, issue that our local schools are facing is I'm seeing that our community has been torn and quite political argument lately. I, I think that a lot of trust has been lost and the board being neutral on political issues. And I want to return to more neutral political stance. Let's go.
Um, okay, we're going to rotate here.
I have an answer again. Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. It's a lot to keep track of. I'm sorry. Um, I'm going to agree with um, my colleagues regarding the public funding. It's been a bad situation for a long time. And the cuts at the federal level have made it worse. So we are putting together a budget committee, um, like Andrea said, and really trying to be thoughtful about where we can trim minority, very lean organization and how it have least impact on students as possible. This board has been really huge advocates at the state level and at the federal level to advocate for better funding. Um, I created last year the board's first legislative platform to create a more formalized way to do that. And we were voting on Tuesday about joining a statewide campaign called Get It Done to really push the legislator, legislature to fundamentally change the funding mechanism to address the adequacy studies that um, Director Peterson mentioned. And I also wanted to just add that the opportunity gaps in educational equity is also a challenge in our district. It's a challenge across districts across the state. Um, and we've made some really impressive um, progress in closing those. But some of our student groups are still not performing at the levels of others. And that's really not what we want. We know all students can succeed and we want to give them the resources and supports they need to do that. So continuing to work on that is really important for me.
Why don't we go to Rick? For question number two. Achievement gaps persist for multilingual learners, students with disabilities and low income students. What specific policies would you support to close those gaps?
Well, I guess the beginning of the answer is that uh, many folks don't know this, but under our governance method, coherent governance, uh, this board does not make academic policies. They don't make district policies. Um, the way that we manage the school district is we are the keepers of the purse strings. We, you know, oversee the budget and we oversee our single employee, which is Dr. Karen Cheset. Um, so having said that, I am not an authority on, you know, academic curriculum and, and policies. But I will say this, I have complete faith in the professionals we have. Um, I've seen reports come back from our student services department, Dr. Vanessa Giddings. Um, now, the reality is, as you've said, gaps do exist. Um, but I also know that our professionals are constantly looking for the best, the newest, the most effective tools to try and address those gaps within, you know, English language learners and children on IEPs and uh, you know, so I'm not going to get specifically into ideas that I have because that's not my role. That's not my lane. But I do believe strongly in the professionalism of our staff. We do monitor and give reports on results and policies and how they're being carried out within the district each and every month. And that's how we keep an eye on it. And I, you know, I believe that they're heading the right direction and truly their innovation and constantly looking nationwide and even worldwide um, for, for better, newer methods. Um, actually, our superintendent actually did a tour in uh, was it Finland? Finland this past summer to see what they were doing in education. That's the kind of innovation and forward thinking that our staff is doing to try and improve the outcomes for every student.
Great. Right. Jody, you need to repeat it? You got it? You got the question?
Please repeat it.
Okay. Achievement gaps persist for multilingual learners, students with disabilities and low income students. What specific policies would you support to close these gaps?
Okay, so now you're talking about my people. These are my neighbors, my coworkers and my peers. And when we're struggling in the community, it makes it even more to struggle with the uh, with schools, with, with surprises and uh, having decisions made that we're excluded from. This, this is where I'm looking to really make the great change is to let families participate on a higher level in their child's education. You know, everybody's throwing these answers at me. Well, you could join a SAG committee. Those are during work hours. Some of us are working two, three jobs. And including in that, uh, or trying to get into those committees is, it's just impossible. But uh, it's, it's really going to be more of, hey, we've got to reach out to these parents on a, on a higher level bring them in on their student's education.
Thank you. Erica.
Thank you. Um, yeah, um, one of the things I'm most proud of on the board is that we have integrated um, the issue of opportunity gaps into our board policies. Director Peterson described, we don't do district policies. We hold our superintendent accountable to really high expectations and allow her to hire the right people and make the right changes to get those done. And so what we did is we put those in the results that we monitor her on. They were not there before. There was no expectation of that before. And so we've made really clear um, expectation in there to do that. And then we monitor those results each year. And we just had a big meeting to show what those results were to the community. Um, we still have a lot of work to do, but we've made progress, which is more than what most districts can say. Um, and one of the things we are doing is we have an inclusive excellence group that brings in stakeholders from all across the community. Um, we meet after work hours, um, families, um, parents, students, uh, staff, members. Um, and we have a strategic plan and one of the um, there's several goals of that plan, but it is family engagement, um, trying actually to move those meetings outside of work hours. So I'm disappointed to hear that's not happening in all schools. Um, but really continuing that work because no one, no one person has the right answers and every family has a different experience. And so really trying to identify what those barriers are and being innovative and finding solutions um, to how to overcome them.
Great. Thank you. Good morning.
Um, to build on what has been said, um, the board doesn't set that type of policy at all. But what we do do is have a fuller side over the superintendent. So if we have goals and metrics that are set and they're presented to us, there's a result, we can ask questions and we can direct the superintendent to look at things, which we did with our special education program a few years back. And they asked for an independent audit of the program to make sure that we were meeting the needs of all of our students. That's students on IEPs, individual education plans, that's students on 504, which are the medical plans. That's students that are on native and talented plans. And what that uncovered was that we had some disproportionate weight in some of the ways that we are identifying certain students into those plans. And so that gave the staff and the idea to go back and examine the root causes of why, why these things are happening and what could be the, the effect of those on the growth of those students. Now, coming out of a pandemic, what we did see with special student groups was much faster. The gap was narrowed much more than their peers. I don't know if I'm articulating that correctly, which may meant that a lot of the interventions and things that we were benefiting in place, which are based on research and based on experience or work. And you will hear the word MTS-S said a lot in the school district. That means multi-tiered systems of support. And Vanessa Giddings, uh, is the person who's in charge of our student support services and with our MTS. What models appropriate for them to get them up to speed and give them all the resources that they need. And that includes intervention special counselors, peer support, tutoring, whatever they may need to help them um, close that gap. We're working very hard on it.
Thank you. Third question. Mr. Galloway. You've got a question. I don't think it was better than me. Yeah, good at special relations. So I find you some intervention here. Uh, in these times, Jody, in these times of strong public opinion, how would you collaborate with board members and parents who hold different views from yours and find a middle ground that helps all students?
I'm sorry, find what?
Middle ground.
Middle ground.
I'm going to give you guys uh, credit for what you are doing with the uh, the newly state of the district. That, that was awesome. Like that's going somewhere. I just recently found out about your coffee chats. I think, I guess that's been going on, which I, I don't think the word's getting out there about that. Um. Now uh, the middle ground is the hard part is what we all need to realize is we, we have common goals. We just think of different ways to get there. And so we need to just find each other of these goals. Make sure that those are what everybody wants. Make sure that everybody recognizes that's where we're moving towards. And uh, that I think we can find some wiggle room in the way that we get there. We can do some compromise.
Yeah, I can. You mean, you can? Thank you. Uh, no, I've got it. Um, yeah, this is a topic that it was really a big focus of mine when I started is a lot. We needed a lot more transparency and a lot more really genuine family and community engagement. Um, so it's an issue I've worked really hard on. Um, we've done a lot for transparency. Um, the district during, it actually started during COVID, Jody. Um, obviously there was a very increased demand in um, parents' feedbacks. Um, and we needed that feedback for COVID. So we, in addition to having some forums on specific issues, the board decided to start. At that time, it was a monthly coffee chat because the public really wanted a two-way dialogue with us. We understand that meetings, there's public comment, but we can't really get into a dialogue during that public meeting. So we created coffee chats for that reason. And we will, if you have suggestions for better getting the word out there, I would love to hear them. We do put them out in our, all of our emails and social media. Um, and so this board, I think, has done a really good job of trying to get all of the opinions and engagement from the different stakeholders. That's been really important to us. Um, obviously we don't always agree on what the right answer is moving forward. And um, I agree with Jody. I think oftentimes our values are really well-aligned. We just have different ideas about how to execute it. Um, and that's where it gets really tricky. And that's actually where it's really difficult as a board member. Sometimes we have to make really difficult decisions. Um, I have found that focusing on those values and also centering the student voice um, has been really helpful in that process. And that was especially evident in our recent flag issue that was obviously very divisive. The students were really powerful in sharing their voice and their experience. And the board felt it was important to really center that.
Okay. Um, you repeat that question in its entirety? This is about finding middle ground? It has been a long time since I
Since, it's been a month.
In these times of strong public opinions, how would you collaborate with board members and parents who hold different views from yours and to find a middle ground that helps all students?
Well, yes, staying focused on the students always works. Um, the board is really open and listening to everybody. We aren't required to hold public participation, but we do. We've extended it. Additionally, we've increased it so people can join with the Zoom option if it's too hard to get in and see them. We meet with a group of community leaders quarterly and give us advice on big issues that we're grappling with. And there are, I don't know, I tried to count, but there are dozens of committees and places and ways that people get, get involved as well as our weekly newsletter that's got about every piece of information that you could imagine that's happening. So in terms of getting the word out and being accessible, we've tried very hard to do that. In terms of finding middle ground, not, not everything is a In terms of finding middle ground, not, not everything is a compromise. Not everything needs to be necessarily even set up that way. Um, I do encourage all the voices. We want to support our entire community and every single student, but sometimes when people come and they're angry and they're impassioned, oftentimes it's social issues, cultural issues, things like that, that don't necessarily serve the students. Still happy to listen to them, still willing to find the common ground that there is, but it's really helpful when people come, the solutions with ideas. Right? Not just yelling and saying, I give you advice and you never listen, was actually said at a board meeting. That, that's not true. Listen and we understand very clearly. But saying, I keep giving you advice and you don't take it are two very different things. And so the board is five members. But if we speak with one single voice, we don't always agree on how to get there, but we do always agree on our goals. And at the end of the day, when we vote, can we align, we will all support that vote. And so in terms of finding middle ground, we look for all the voices and we always look for what's going to support our students best.
Great. Rick.
Um, I want to credit Jody first and foremost, just as my colleagues did. You're, you're absolutely right that we all have our student success in mind. You know, we all have, you know, we all want to support our kids, everybody else's kids, all the students in the in the district. Um, having said that, my, my answer specifically to this question is like so many things, when it comes to human beings, I think communication is one of our biggest challenges. We try endlessly to be creative in the ways that we publicize what's going on because we, we have no desire to do anything in secret. Our desire is completely transparent. In fact, it's required by Sunshine laws here in the state of Colorado. The challenge is trying to get that message to all, you know, forty thousand of our constituents who live within the boundaries of the school district. Um, we're going to keep trying and I would encourage anyone in the community who says, you know, hey, I, I don't know about this. Offer us details about where are you looking? Where are you, you know, because if you go to the, the school district website, everything we do is there. Every meeting we have, there's always a recap to every board meeting showing the highlights. Every board meeting is videotaped. If you want some real riveting, you know, video watches, three hours, kind of YouTube, listen to some of that stuff, but it's, it's important work. It really is. I mean, but that's, that's an ongoing process for us. It's communication. We want to hear different voices so that we can factor that in as we make decisions for our entire community. And truthfully, I mean, we're not going to make everybody happy any other time. It's just not the way things work. But the key is for folks to educate themselves, ask us questions. We're happy to answer. And hopefully we keep doing good work.
Great. Okay, number four. What does parental rights mean to you? Do you believe in removing certain books from school libraries or changing curriculum? For example?
Okay, um, I'm going to answer them kind of backwards. I do not believe in banning books in any sort of way. Um, in terms of curriculum, the, some, sorry. This is, okay. In terms of curriculum, the board actually doesn't um choose the curriculum at all. That's another um topic that we delegate to our superintendent. Um, but in terms of the parental rights regarding that, um, I absolutely believe in, believe that family engagement is really critical to student success. And we are trying to find more and more ways to overcome all of the barriers to that that some of my colleagues have mentioned. Um, sorry, guys. Try it now. Testing. Um, that sounds better. Um, parents, I, I do support parents of always having a right to opt out of certain materials and curriculum that they don't want their children to, to participate in for whatever reason. Um, and they're always allowed and encouraged to do that in our system. Um, so I guess to me parental involvement means and engagement means really knowing what's going on with your students, connecting with their teachers, understanding what their strengths and weaknesses are and how you can support them in your, in your home. Um, and just being engaged and knowing, knowing what you can do to support them, whether that's opting out of material, if that's your preference, or um, asking for more supports if your student is struggling. Um, but I think engaging like, like Rick said, our staff is incredible and they want to engage with families and they want your help in serving their students. So I think that's what great education looks like.
Thank you. Andrew?
Um, yeah, the parents' rights gets thrown around a lot and I don't, I've never seen a bill of parents' rights. I've never seen anything like that written down. So when people are saying they're not respecting parents' rights, it's not defined as to what that means. Parents are part of what we do. They're, they're there. They're there for the support at home. They're the ones that get the kids to school in the morning. They're the ones that help cheer their kids on and they're ones that provide us valuable input into what we're doing. And we reach out to parents all the time. Seventeen years in this district, and I have never once heard of a teacher unwilling to meet with a parent. We have got the best, most caring educators and staff. Their doors are open. In fact, that's where they want you to start is with the classroom teacher before anything gets out. Or so superintendent will give you her is always there to answer the, the criticism that are all operational. So to be clear, the things about around this are not the board's lane. We welcome the parent engagement, but we do not set curriculum. We do not choose what books go libraries. I'm a hundred percent against banning books, a hundred percent across the board. That being said, a lot of these books aren't going to wind up ever in, in the school library. They would be inappropriate altogether, some books, not all books. But the books that we do have, uh, they, they fit with our curriculum. The curriculum fits with all Colorado and national standards. So everything is equal. Parents don't want it, they can opt out. We've suggested, and I think the superintendent's working on making sure that parents at the higher levels, even maybe people have a list of what's going to be read that year. They can check out the books themselves. There's absolutely no problem with doing that. In terms of parent rights, you're doing things in secret with our kids. There's indoctrination. That is nonsense. I'm going to actually say that very clearly. What we do is for the kids, the parents are welcome. They're part of what we do. They are not part of specifically with the board duties, but in terms of what goes on in the schools, a hundred percent.
Great.
Regarding parents' rights, um, I do think parents do have certain rights and, and as Director Parmenter pointed out, they're, they're not necessarily written down anywhere, but every parent has the right to choose how they want to raise their children, how they want to discipline their children. Um, they have the right to choose what type of education their kids get. Um, we've got the public school system. We've got several charters. Um, we've got a Catholic school in town. There's homeschooling. Um, those are all rights that parents have. Um, and we respect those. We've got, you know, partnerships with all those communities on one level or another. Um, as far as if parents disagree with some of the curriculum or, for example, we also have the Healthy Kids Colorado survey coming up, which is an incredible resource for getting information about kids across the state. It goes into all sorts of good information, good research and good feedback for us. Um, but some of the questions on there are sensitive to some parents. And that's why, as Director Parmenter also said, anyone can opt out of anything. Um, I know my son was uh assigned a book within his uh English license to read and his, you know, it was a, an adult level book. It was, had some provocative things in it. Um, it was not inappropriate, um, but every parent had the option for opting out and having a different assignment. Um, that's the key is that, you know, every parent does have the right to speak up, pursue communication and, and try and get the best experience from their student according to their personal beliefs. Um, regarding book bans, our professionals, our educators choose literature that supports the curriculum they're doing. There is a series of oversight within, you know, their supervisors. And there's also a process in place that if a parent has a concern, they can bring it to their principal or bring it to the superintendent and we can have a discussion about it. But I am absolutely opposed to book bans.
Jody, thank you.
This question is kind of specific with the parental rights on books and curriculum. And with my experience in head start, it was the same as you guys have mentioned is uh, we didn't really direct the curriculum. It was staff that uh went over it and made recommendations uh to our CDO. He was ultimately this guy explained it to us. Now, as for books, I don't think this issue has come up yet in this district. I haven't seen it myself. Um, actually that first that I heard of Rick when you said, well, one of your children read a book. It'd be, it'd be good to know about that before. Now, it has been uh put through the courts that parents do have the right to direct their child's education. And uh, I was standing by that.
Thank you. And then we'll, we'll do the next question. This is from one of our audience. What are your thoughts on the value and impacts of charter schools that are not authorized by the Durango School District in our area?
Charter schools exist within the public school system in Colorado to provide choice and innovation outside of the public school. And the way that it works under local control is if the school district um goes ahead and, and applies for and gets the chartering authority, then they make the decision about what charter schools can come into their community. And they do that based on, our board looks at it based on, does it provide a, a need to, to respond or answer a need in the community that is not being met in the public schools? We have two publics. There are two charter schools here at Animas High School and Mountain Middle School that were both chartered when Ninar had lapsed in its chartering authority. So they were both chartered under the state of Colorado. And then the Juniper School is an elementary expanding in the middle that is chartered under a direct Ninar. Um, in terms of how they work with our public schools, yes, they dilute the amount of money because it is per person, per student that would go to Ninar schools, that would go to a charter school. It's a direct pass to them. That being said, they do provide an alternative learning for some of those families that need it. Both Mountain and Animas have found been very successful for a lot of our student body. And what we find is that students will come in and out of our charter schools in our community. And so we partner with them because they're friends out of school. They, they play together, they're neighbors and they don't care how we govern or who's in charge of what school and what accountability, right? So we embrace our kids. We share our middleies with them. We've shared our bond proceeds with them. We share transportation with in terms of, do we have a need for more charter schools at this time? I don't think that we do. One hasn't come up um to us anytime soon or recently.
Okay. Rick?
Um, I think charter schools are a really valuable benefit to our school district, um, regardless of whether charter in my local school district or the uh, you know, Colorado Charter School Institute. Um, choice is important. Choice is important for every family because uh, again, as has been said, Mountain Middle School and uh Animas High School have a, a different model for how they're teaching than the public schools. And it suits some students really, really well and they're incredibly successful. Um, the reality is it does change our financing. So there has to be a balance struck there, but I don't think it's a black or white question. Yes, we need them. No, we don't want them. Um, we have partnered with the charter schools in different ways throughout the years. Um, occasionally we've had some of those financial difficulties, but that's, that's a reality. Got into already about funding and what have you. But we do value our charter schools. We value our families who attend them. Um, at this time, I, I think we've got a nice mix of options for our families. Um, I guess I should also touch on the fact that we did have one charter school that applied, I think it was two years ago, who was rejected. Um, that I heard throughout some in the universe that, that it was a theological difference we had. And that's, that again, is just not true. Um, part of the public record is the fact that we've had about a hundred and thirty deficiencies with their application. And we have a very strict list of, you know, the charter school has to, has to conform to what the goals are of this school district and what the methods are. Um, so I just would, would love to declare about that, that the reason that charter school was rejected was not on belief basis. It was just that it wasn't a well thought out, well executed plan.
Could you please repeat?
Listen, what are your thoughts on the value and impacts of charter schools that are not authorized by the district in our area?
Not authorized by the district.
In our area.
School choice is very important. If uh if families aren't working out with, then they need to have their options out there. And uh, so now we're down to two winter schools. And I think that's not quite enough options. You know, there is a Catholic school, but that is uh, you have to pay for that. And some of our families aren't able to. So I would uh, I'd like to make track different charter schools to be here. The, maybe some of those processes to get them here.
Um, yeah, I, I do support choice in education. I think it's really important. Uh, and I am actually incredibly impressed with the amount of choice that our community has. For one, our size, we have two out of district charters, one.
Better?
Yes. Okay. Sorry, we have, um, we have a lot of choice in our community. We have um two uh non-district charter schools, one district charter school, a private school. We have a choice within our district. We allow students to open and roll into different schools if they choose that. We also have an alternative high school that students can choose. Um, and I think they, you know, charters do play an important role. As um Director Parmenter said, they really, their intention is to provide innovation and flexibility in education to try to find new and exciting ways to be successful. And I think that's really important. But I also think it's really important that because public money is going to those schools, that they are serving every single student and they are welcoming every single student into their school. Um, the, because we have so many choices right now, um, I do have concerns over offering additional charter school choices to our community because of the funding issue. If we had another charter school in our district, we would have to shut down nine ours, nine our schools. Um, it's just too much of a loss. And I think our surrounding communities, I'm not even sure they could sustain a public education system if they had charter schools in their district because of the funding issue. So that's my major concern.
Okay. From the audience. How does the board address mental health of students? What is in the strategic plan?
Well, um, again, it goes down to operational issues. Um, the board monitors all of our policies and all of our expectations for our staff. Um, but we don't directly get involved in that. Having said that, we do use a mental health screener, a PTEA for each student, which is written at an appropriate level for each student. Um, it's an incredibly beneficial tool. Uh, we have found that coming out of COVID, there was a real spike in mental health concerns for our students. Um, and this screen is, is not particularly invasive, but it's got some very specific type of questions that can give the professionals within our, our district just some clues about where kids are at, what they might need. This also, you know, kind of comes into our, our student services and our MTSS program. Um, very often your, your educators and your staff get a very different perspective on your student than maybe what you see at home. And they may see, hear or recognize something that, that maybe needs a little more attention. Now, again, nobody is going to do anything behind any parent's back, but any sort of thing that we find as a district that raises some concern, we're, we're going to open a conversation about that. Again, everything we do is for the benefit of the students. And as in every way, it's not just about grades. It's not just about food. It's not just about mental And as in every way, it's not just about grades, it's not just about food, it's not just about mental wellbeing. Um, now, I know there are some folks who feel like some of these questions are inappropriate for young kids, but I just simply disagree with that. Um, I think mental health, because of the amount of time that staff and educators spend with these students, they have a very, very good insight into how students are doing and what they may need.
Very specific question on what is the str- strategic plan? I'm learning about that with all you, uh, right along all of you here. I I haven't really studied within the street strategic plan for mental health. Um, just now finding about or finding out about this screener. And uh, I'll go ahead and look up that M T S S and study on that. But uh, I do have to disagree that things are being done to them parents back. I mean, students are being, but do you receive them calling and selling? They're joining groups that that the parents don't even know about or end up finding out about through their kids. And uh, I want to see some changes there.
Thank you. You repeat the question, Amy. How does the board address mental health of students? What is in the strategic plan?
Okay, so yeah, again, this is an operational issue, but because it's been so important to the board that this be addressed, we have integrated mental health indicators into our results policies that we monitor the superintendent on. Um, and we do that through, as Director Peterson said, um, a mental health screener. And I have to give huge kudos to our superintendent and our leadership because our school district is really leading the way in this. We are one of the very few school districts that doesn't any sort of accountability or monitoring. Um. Can you hear me if I do that?
It's you.
No, it's me, okay? It doesn't sound like you can hear me when I do this, my apologies. Um, we're one of the few districts that are really leading the way in this area and and having accountability in the region. Um, we also have a hub which provides wraparound services for students who really need more supports um than we can provide in a normal daily education. So they go to an actual separate facility, and then the goal is to give them the supports they need in order to get them back into day to day school. Um, and we partner with a lot of different organizations to provide those services. We do not have enough funding to meet the needs of our students' mental health. And so to me, with the board, on the board side of this, we need more funding. That's what we need. Um, it's additionally challenging when you live in a rural community and you have a real lack of supports for mental health, and particularly for mental health supports for youth. We have very little. Um, we actually have to do telehealth calls with University of Denver, the uh Children's Hospital there sometimes. Um. So I would just say, you know, the strategic plan is a district strategic plan, that's not the board's strategic plan, we get updated on it. Um, and off the top of my head, I'm not sure what is in there on the on the mental health side.
Okay.
Um, most, most of what I would answer has been said, but teachers have had a lot on their plates these days, and they are being asked to be to be mental health counselors on top of being teachers, and that after they already have so much to do and they still get extra mouths because they care and they love for our kids. Teaching is a rewarding job, not a thankless one, but it doesn't come with. We have our multi-caret system of support. In terms of the strategic plan, things that are in there would be like continuing to fund the hub, our occupational um therapeutic day school, things for students. But to add on to what's been said, one of the things that that I cherish is we have the student voice, and that comes into our boardroom. We've got students that sit on our board, and they tell us what they're thinking, they tell us what they're feeling. They tell us what their needs are. We have personally with every agency I can think of in our community, the Plata Youth Services, we have an access health actually has a um an office in the high school where students can go. And so by reaching out and extending our network beyond what we can, so if identify something in the classroom, providing more resources, resources and support to. It's a community problem. Um, getting the phones out of the classroom and some of the screen time down and more healthy interaction peer to peer has been really helpful as well. There are the student voices in the boardroom, and then they act on that.
Thank you. So many again. In the face of tight budgets, what are up to three expenditure?
Um, I'm sorry, that's past the school to the board. There's a, there's a budget committee for that. And uh, you it's the the added value to the district. I I disagree with the straight down cutting everything by five percent. I think we need to find things that are more inefficient. Be cutting them out. Um. It's it's sad to hear that decisions that are coming vacant are maybe filled in order to cut the budget. Um. And uh, actually we can find some grants to maybe maybe cover some.
Thanks. Um, yeah, I mean, Jody's right, I don't think any board member or the board in general should be deciding what cuts we make. Um, I think uh the direction that superintendent has taken, creating a budget committee is absolutely the right thing to do because you want to get as many perspectives as you possibly can to make that decision. So we want educators in there, we want families in there, we want students in there, we always put students on our committees. And as Andrea said, that's a really important voice that often doesn't get heard in these big decisions. But those are the people that get affected the most by it. Um, so that committee is going to come to the board with recommendations. And it's our job to ask difficult questions. Difficult questions, and and we do need to make the final decision because the board does does approve the budget. Um. So yeah, I don't want to pick out any three in particular, but I would look forward to hearing and trusting the process is done really well. Um, and really just trying to make cuts that um are as far away from students as possible, and maybe cutting some areas where we aren't seeing as much success um as in other areas and really using.
Great. And I can tell you we need to cut the budget, we need more money. I think that getting creative about where that can come from so we don't have to cut it is valuable. I mean, right now, we've got still our music coming in and helping with instruments and partnering with our music plan. If we get these two propositions on the ballot, or the healthy meals, L L and 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 to pass, that will alleviate some of the burden and the cost that school districts are required to pay by this unfounded unfunded mandate. We want kids to be fed, but the kids that used to be able to pay aren't paying at all, and so that falls to us to make up the difference. This would help with that. Creative solutions, the community wide effort is where it's going to be. I really want to maintain our personnel um above all, and try not to cut anything but to find other ways to keep them. And that, if that is looking outside and having more of our community resource, people step up and help us, then great. I think that we have a pretty solutions oriented community when we put the word out and we'll get it out, and we'll figure out how to get people to come and and give us their ideas. And I always read, I look internationally, I look nationally, what are other school districts doing? This budget stuff does keep me awake, I think about it all the time. And so rather than saying, what three things would get cut? How different can be really better, making caps for kids, and I will figure it out. Come on, Karen.
This is one of my favorite topics. No, no, I'm quite serious. When I, when I came on the board and became treasurer, it's just this interests me, it's the way my mind works, and I'm thankful that I was given the opportunity. Um, now, having said that, um. I do want to address first and foremost, the five percent and the ten percent that were mentioned as having been cut across the board. Um, that was not kind of taking a machete to the budget. That, those figures can't come up because we have an exceptional director of finance. And she is always forward looking. We don't want to be surprised by anything. We always over budget, we always under, you know, expect how much we're going to get in, so we've always got a little bit of wiggle room. The five percent was from uh the budget of the schools for discretionary spending. There was no positions card. It was just, we said, each school, look, we have to reduce by five percent how much your school gets in your budget for the principal to be able to to spend how they see fit, you know? Usually it's supplies or materials and things for the the curriculum, the education. Um, the ten percent was the same, it was from every department, discretionary spending, and it's been difficult. But those two cuts were made because our director of finance looked at, and I'm going to say it, that the elephant in the room is the federal government. We knew from day number one of this current administration that there was a strong possibility that federal dollars. They've just yesterday taken the 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 uh taken the opportunity to essentially disband the Department of Education. So that's where the five and ten percent, just to get back to hopefully being even. The two million we need to cut is because last year, we knew that we had to do something for our staff. The cost of living in Durango is exorbitant. We had to do something. We took two million from a savings account, which has six billion in it, which is not stable. We got to cut that two million so that next year we have that same money that we've already authorized. And it goes on and on and on.
And this is kind of specific. Since two thousand twenty four, Durango High School began requiring students to store phones, cell phones during class. Do you agree with this policy? And if so, would you also be open to instituting a all day ban of cell phones?
Great question. Um. Yeah, in fact, that policy was always in place. It just turns out that the high school wasn't really following it for a while. Um. And and that was because it's really hard. It was put on the teachers to follow that and implement that, and that's one more thing that they have to do. Um, and that was really hard. And so the the board actually really asked for that policy to be readdressed um and to look and consider other options. Do we need to ban them for the whole day? What is best practice? What are people doing? This is something that districts across the country, we're all trying to figure it out. Um, the phones are a really big problem. Um, so right now, they have to put their phones away. Um, they can use them in past periods. And we're really testing to see how that works. It's even a little stricter this year where the phones cannot be in visible view of the students because of data that shows even being able to see their phones makes them distracted. Um, so we have even tightened that a little bit this year, and I think we'll probably reassess every year and see what's working and what's not, and getting feedback from teachers and staff and students um about how that's going. But it is a really big problem, and um I am concerned about it.
Oh, sorry.
Cell phones?
Yes.
Subject near and dear to my heart. So in back in twenty nineteen, you're a seat in where I used to live in, in Zee Branton, and said to me at the time, hey, you might be interested if you have to appoint somebody. I didn't even realize that I lived in that district. And I said, well, um, can it make any any difference about cell phone use in the classrooms? So well, it's not really a board thing, but you could certainly bring it up, and I did. And I championed and wrote a policy, and it wasn't followed in its entirety until recently when the state of Colorado doesn't mean that you just have to have a policy, or policy could say kids can use their phones or not. The way that I looked at it, especially in these younger rights, there's an equity issue there. Not every kid even has a phone. So some teachers were using them as a learning tool in the classroom when they were not your phone to do this. Well, if you're the kid that doesn't have a phone, you have to share, or you're the kid that has to share your phone. We have calculators, we have resources, right? So let's take that out of the equation. That's not part of what you need to go to school. It is nothing but a distraction, number two. Number three, there were, there was a time when my son, a long time ago, said, hey, during the middle of the day, what's the Netflix password? And I thought, you kidding me? And the teacher, they were done with their work, taking a test and said, you know, you can do whatever you want. I said, well, that's just not what we're doing in in public school. If they're finished with their work, give them more work, keep them challenged. No cell phones. Um, the high school resisted it for a while, but this year it's part of what we're doing. In terms of the issue they have in between, I think we're testing it out. Um, as a parent, I would say like at middle school and stuff, when there's so much of that bullying, I would say, no, let's just get them out of it altogether, as a parent. Um, as a board member, that's operational, that's for the superintendent to decide as they're collecting the data as one to one, the computers for kids now with filters on.
Um, let me say this, regardless of students or adults or anyone else, these things are a huge part of the problem in in a whole spectrum of different issues in our society, but specifically directed into our schools. No, I I would support an outright ban. Achieve that without making our educators and our staff the telephone police, I don't know. Um, and it really would have to have, you know, any sort of control we do with these, has to have the support of the parents. There are some parents who don't want their kids to be without a phone. They worry that something awful is going to happen, and and they need to talk to their kid right away. Um, my feeling is if something awful happens at school, we want those kids listening to the leaders in the school, listening to whoever, as far as our community servants who come to help them, that's where their attention should be, not texting mom or dad, which I know is is horrible to think that in a time of such panic and such worry, that you might not be able to talk to your kids. But I I think it does more harm than good. Um, now, having said that, our middle schools have a zero tolerance policy for schools on or out during the school day. So the children who have phones are permitted to use it before the school day, but bell to bell, they have to be put away. And the high school, as has been mentioned, they've enhanced the program this year, but you know, I I know it's it's a real challenge. I know my own son, it's, you know, he can pretty much figure out a workaround for just about anything. Um, and you know, they have the option of either putting them in the caddy or putting them in their backpack, but kids can do really good about just. No, I I think there's no place for them, they don't need them during the school day. But it's it's very difficult for for parents and students to kind of wrap their brain around that.
Jeremy, you get to give us the real answer on this now.
The addiction is real. When that kid can see that cell phone, that's where their mind goes, even if it's in the caddy in the front of the class. It's, hey, I need to be looking this up, or hey, I need to be chatting with so and so. Um, now, they even have the watches that'll connect to their phone, even if it's in the caddy in the front of the classroom. I support an electronics ban, you know? Andrea Andrea said they have their Chromebooks that are school issue, everything they need and can do for their schoolwork is there. Keep those things out of sight, out of mind. Support an all day ban. Parents do have different uh thoughts on this, they worry that they school and they they want their kid to be able to call them. There's there's a lot of worry about safety, so in the classroom during learning situations, out of sight, out of mind, but not the all day ban.
Thank you.
Me?
Yes. Do you, this is an audience question. Do you feel that students should know your vote or views?
None. I mean, that's not a trick or answer. It's not relevant. Um, they don't need to know who I voted for or why I voted for them um at all. People are saying that the board is political, this and that. Everybody has their own eyes and their viewpoint by which they approach things, but we need to suspend as much of that as possible. Keep it focused on what our kids, which is something that we do agree. How we're registered to vote is is not not relevant. Um, in terms of the politics and and who's in charge of the funding and those things, swing back and forth, of course. And so you have to pay attention and know what's going on larger than as a board member. But in terms of how we But in terms of how we make the decisions around what's best for kids.
Before I write back for a moment and tie together two of the recent questions we had, going back to the cell phones and the mental health issue. There is data that shows a direct correlation between children's use of cell phones on their mental health. So that's, you know, they, they tie together and again, they say both areas that we're concerned about. Not directly to this question, but important that I wanted to make that connection.
Thank you.
Now, I think, do students, should students know about, I'm assuming we're talking about education politics more so than the board's politics. Maybe that's just an assumption of my board's.
You said you. She said yours.
Your political.
Oh, well, that's, it's really, it shouldn't come into this discussion. But I will extend a little bit because this question has come to the board about staff members. I think there's a difference between sharing one's experience and one's views in the context of learning and trying to convince someone to see things your way. I would never want to say to any educator in the classroom, you're not allowed to talk about personal politics. Because again, that's a blanket statement where there may be something very pertinent to the discussion that's going on, whether it be about civics or whether it be about democracy or where personal experience in a discussion can be helpful. But when it comes down to an adult trying to influence a student to see things their way or believe what they believe, no, I think that's, that should not be in the classroom. But I'm not ever going to say that no adult can talk about politics in the classroom because this is the world we live in. And as Director Parmenter said, you have to be aware of what's going on. And that's not necessarily a personal discussion, but it is a discussion of politics.
Students don't need to know their political views of their educators any more than they need to know their religious views of their educators. Now, when a board decides to adopt political symbols as a blanket over the entire school district, this can really tear a community apart. And those political views should have been left at the doorstep or came in. Same as religious things.
I agree that, that no one needs to know our political views. And I really want to challenge, I think, the assertion that this board has been political in any way. I challenge the idea that those symbols that we adopted are political. I don't think transgender rights, pride flags, or Black Lives Matter has anything to do with politics. I think it has to do with accepting all students and all people and welcoming everyone into our schools. And I actually can't think of a single example when our board has been political. We really pride ourselves on focusing on students and students first. And I just, I don't think it's been an issue despite the accusations that have come our way. I'll just, I'll just add one thing is that we do advocate a lot for public education and for our students, but that is also not political. We advocate the legislature, the governor, our federal representatives across all aisles on behalf of our students. So yeah, absolutely. The political stance doesn't need to be there and I don't think it has been.
This is a question. Do you have a question? Okay. Do you support mandatory professional development for all staff, teachers, bus drivers, and bus coaches on creating an inclusive school environment and on effective intervention with hateful language or actions used? Why? Say it again?
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you support mandatory professional development for all staff, teachers, bus drivers, and bus coaches on creating inclusive school environment and on effective intervention with hateful actions used?
hateful?
hateful is the question.
The simple answer is yes. Now, having said that, the reason I would say yes specific to our district is because we do have a diversity, equity, and inclusion policy on the books. We have a results policy that supports it. So that is one of the basic foundations that our district, you know, holds of value. Then yes, I think, you know, having required professional development that supports that goal is, is absolutely broken up a grid. This is another one of those situations, unfortunately, where the concept of diversity, equity, I think there are some who have tried to make it political. They, they started calling it DEI, DEI, DEI. It's a bad word or something. And when you break down the statement, diversity, having a diverse group of students and a diverse group of professionals benefits our community, benefits our system of education. Equity, every single student getting what they need to succeed. Not the same thing for every student because that's equality. Equity means that if this student needs a little extra support, we give that student a little extra support, any student for whatever they need. Inclusion, maybe everyone feel like they belong, like they are a part of the group, like they are welcome. I don't see any negatives to any of this. Unfortunately though, because some have tried to make this a political issue by trying to tie it to one group or another, my feeling is that doesn't make it political. Unfortunately, it's, it started at the very highest level. And again, I'm going to call out the president because he is the one who tried to make this a political issue, a divisive issue. And there's nothing divisive about the concepts of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Yes, please.
Okay. Do you support mandatory professional development for all staff on creating inclusive school environment and on effective intervention with hateful language or actions used?
Okay, this, this sounds an event would have happened and then they would call for a professional development. So I'd have to say, what does that professional development look like? Is that a third party consultant coming from the other side of the state that has their set values and their ideas? Or is that going to come from our staff, our community having the conversation and directly addressing that one event? What led up to it? Where are we going to set goals? How are we going to monitor our, our preference on these goals? So yeah, let's mandate that it comes from our community, our staff.
Thanks. Yeah, I absolutely support that. And that, that training is mandatory, as Director Peterson said, but it didn't used to be. The reason it's mandatory now is because our community, we started an inclusive excellence group to really get figuring out how to address families and students not feeling welcome and accepted and performing at high levels in our schools. And one of the very first recommendations of that group was to make professional development mandatory for all staff. Because the, the staff that was choosing that professional development was not the staff that needed it most. And every single one of our staff members has an influence on our students. The bus drivers are often the first person they see during the day and how they are greeted and how they are welcomed and how they are treated on that bus matters for their education. The progress we've made in starting to close these opportunity gaps shows that the approach we are taking is working. We still have work to do, but absolutely, if we are going to make public school that welcomes and wants to include all students, we need staff that has the skills to do that. And it is a skill. Our staff are incredible at what they do. And they integrate a lot of different skills into teaching and making students feel welcome. But I think that's incredibly important. And in terms of the intervention, I think just the same thing, right? Students will say horrible things. Horrible things do happen. And our staff needs to be there to protect students and to help them learn how to do better because the student who's doing that is also hurting. And they also need a professional staff member to help them do better.
I support the professional development. Professional development, then our staff get responsible for shooting. We're contracted about how much they're gonna think that. Then the superintendent decides collectively on what the administration, what that's going to look like. What do you need to focus on this year versus that year? In terms of the professional development, if you're talking about parents and members who are thrown out, do you believe they spent much money on this type of training? We did. We have to support, we have this necessary and we do have. We all have been conscious of that. There are all sorts of things that we don't realize until they're brought up to us. And when we did this with our staff, I was not present to voice the opinion superintendent and accepted the feedback. This was amazing. The diverse community, 23 or 32, depends on a different year, tribes, 30 tribes represented almost your student body, which is new. That 40% of our students are very reduced, so I don't know why diversity and economic backgrounds or race. It also really helps that your staff is sensitive and understands how they can appreciate people from different backgrounds, just as they have their own. So part of it is respect. That piece of it is mandatory. In terms of the rest of the professional development, that's all based on the need of the theory or what we're calling. Then the last part, hateful, speech, whatever, people process in, in this district, the boards were really part of our processes. We won't be here forever. This will be inherited. We have a process for everything. There is a process for handling this. There is a process for handling probably that type of discipline with the teachers and the schools. And then it goes up as an aspect. Your parents are involved, et cetera. So we have a plan. We do support a few of our staff up to speed so that they can best manage.
You ready for closing, for closing?
Sorry?
We're going.
I think so.
Yeah.
Is that it?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, you said the first. First, we're starting with the board, I thought we didn't heard. So why do you share closing today?
Let's partner with parents. Rebuild trust in our community. I've got to point out that the progress, pride flag, that is why it's called progress. Represent change. A change in laws or new laws to represent closing communities better. Same with BLM, by BLM organization, also changing laws, new laws, that's what makes it political. Community serves a politically neutral board. I'm here, but thanks.
Thank you. First, I just want to thank the lead women voters for putting on this forum. I know it's a ton of work to do this, but I think it's really important for our communities to learn about candidates and local elections is where we have the biggest impact. And I think this election is really about whether or not the community wants the district to keep going in the direction it is or whether it wants to test out a different path. And the metrics all show that we are doing really well in almost every area that folks care about. Students' achievement is up across all subjects and we're starting to make progress on the opportunity gaps. Teacher satisfaction is up. And despite the anecdotes that we hear, parent confidence in our district is also up. We are trending in the right direction. This tells me that what we're doing as a board is working, that our approach is working. It's really exciting to see it. You can see it in the schools. You can see it in the classrooms. I've seen it in my own citizens, in their classrooms. And I think it's part of why that we were endorsed by the Durango Education Association as well as endorsed by the Durango Herald. The community sees that we're having success and they want us to continue that. I would love the opportunity to continue building on that success. We still have work to do. There's a lot of work to do out there. Public education is really hard. And I would love to have the trust of the community to continue working in the same direction, being creative and solving these really tough problems.
Yeah, thank you, lead women voters and everybody that's here today, the people that will listen to this recording for being involved and concerned and caring about public education in our community. And if people don't know this, the Durango School District is the third largest employer in this county behind the tribe and Common Spirit, which is now Mercy and our medical. So you've got 900 full-time employees and 43 will get our October account for this year's in 2,300 students. Which means you know somebody that worked for this school district? Anybody in this community that this school has. So thank you for this. I know that our students are on the right track. You've been around here in these schools for 17 years. I can tell you the difference in graduation between 1920 or 2019, 2021 and 2024, when my two kids graduated from your high school, the amount of opportunities available to my younger child and my older child had worked exponentially. You've got 14 new year pathways for students. We really embrace both educational and technical training, trying to aviation pathway this year. Perhaps I'm going into restaurant management, being lots of management jobs. There's a big need for those and things that is community. So you've got kids now able to go and get up to 48 and like 40 college credits. So that's saving their parents a couple of years of education up at the port where they can go and really get the experience, gain insurance, what's like. So giving kids opportunities and expanding on them all the time. The mentorship is great. I will say that when I hear that we are failing our kids, I'm sorry, failing our kids and on behalf of our educators and our teachers, our kids, our kids are selling new issues that we are dealing with, we probably want to find, we know that.
Last statement. I guess I better say something profound. Everybody walks away with it. In all areas, this, this is democracy in action. I so appreciate the lead women voters. I appreciate all you who took time out of this lovely Sunday afternoon to come here. Please vote. Encourage your friends to vote. I know that four years ago, we had kind of a record turnout for our school board election. I'd love to see it happen again. It makes me so sad when I hear that only 10% of eligible voters turn out. And I think, I think the Clark report told 30% for the last round. That's, that's pretty amazing. We only get about 50% of the presidential election. As Director Brown said, if you feel like we're on the right course, if you, if you feel like the district is doing great things for our students, then the choice is easy. If you feel like we need a different direction, then that choice is easy too. I'm not going to take it personally if, if I fail to be reelected because the community truly values what my opponent offers. But having said that, we have some candidates who really have put forth what they are truly standing for and believing for. Ask them the hard questions. Seek them out. You've got four votes up here who are willing to, to answer the hard questions. And for whatever reason, I'm sure the other two candidates are willing, but couldn't be here, but find out. Make a knowledgeable joint. Just to also piggyback on one thing that Director Brown said. It's not just that our, our student satisfaction, our teacher, staff satisfaction and parent satisfaction are up. We are consistently getting 80 to 90% approval ratings. So it's not just that we're, you know, up to 12% or 10%, it's 80 to 90%. No, that's an average. That's, you know, different categories or different levels, but my heart. I also wanted to mention that along with the Durango Herald and the Professional Association of the Educators, we also just recently were endorsed by Senator Hicken, who has heard about what we're doing down here and wants to assist the people. Thank you so much for your time today.